What we're going to be talking about is in the context of our accreditation program, which most of you are aware of. We've been in this process for roughly five years seeking accreditation to really up our game and move our department forward. I'd like to welcome a special guest who's here with us tonight, Chief William Hunt of the City of Shelby Fire Department. Chief Hunt's been the chief down there for several years. He's deeply involved in accreditation, not only for his own department, but as a peer assessor who travels the country going to other departments to be able to evaluate their documents and be able to work through, helping to get to the point where they can recommend departments to be able to move to a hearing to get accredited through CPSC, Center for Public Safety Excellence. So, we really appreciate him being here tonight. He's leading a peer team. Once again, he's from North Carolina, but he's leading a team of folks who gathered here earlier this week. He has a group of four and the others are from other states around the country, also fire service professionals in departments that have either achieved accreditation or are working to do so presently. So, once again, really appreciate him being here today. So, we have a series of meetings that it's been a really busy week and I really appreciate Chief Hunt taking the time to come here and spend some time with us while we do this presentation this evening. So, we're going to be talking, once again, about the Community Risk Assessment and Standards of Cover. Like I said, to say that, it is a real mouthful. It makes a lot more sense if you break it down. The Community Risk Assessment is one thing, Standards of Cover is another thing, they mirror each other, but they come together to help us build an understanding of our community in a way that is extremely valuable from a public safety standpoint. So, what we're going to talk about tonight, a real brief overview of our accreditation process. Some of you have heard about it before and some of you are maybe a little bit in the dark on it. When we walk out here tonight, I want to make sure that's not the case. We're going to talk about our Community Risk Assessment and then we're going to talk about our Standards of Cover separately so you can understand the relationship between those two things. And then of most value to us and the reason that we're participating in the accreditation process to begin with is to develop an improvement plan so that our department can recognize the places where we have room for improvement and make sure we're moving towards that improvement in the future. Because we happen to believe that our community always deserves better public safety than what it has and we want to strive to reach there knowing that we're always going to be reaching and leaning forward to do that. So, first of all, a real quick overview of our accreditation. The accreditation model of CPSC actually was developed as far back as the eighties in a concert between the International Association of Fire Chiefs and the International City and County Manager Association, which our city manager is a member of and has a proud affiliation with and has shown leadership in that group as well. So, the accreditation involves multiple things that you see on the screen, but there's so much more work that goes into it than what you see on this slide. Back in 2022, some of you who were in office at that time may remember that I came here and presented to you the strategic plan for the agency, which was to follow the years from 2022 to 2027. That was a comprehensive process internally and externally to gather data to be able to develop strategic goals for our organization that we could then carry out and it could shape whether it's budget proposals, policy within the department, initiatives and goals that we could strive for over the course of that period. Clearly, we're on the back half of that now and by this time next year, we'll be deep into or we'll have developed the next five-year strategic plan for the agency. That document is critical in the process for accreditation. Another really big piece of it, a big topic of conversation this week, is our self-assessment. So, this is a collection of roughly 250 performance indicators that covers all aspects of our service. It covers human resources, our fleet management, dispatch, the number of units that we put on a fire scene, how we do things, our processes, our staffing. It's very comprehensive and like I said, there are 250 performance indicators and they all have to be written to and they have to be written to professionally and in a format that adheres to the accreditation model. Next is the community risk. It says risk analysis, actually should say Community Risk Assessment. A Community Risk Assessment, which is essentially applying a methodology to better understand the risks that can occur within our community. And then the Standards of Cover is taking our deployment and what we actually put out on the street and matching that to that risk to kind of measure our performance to see how we're doing. Because we're not going to know how we're going to move forward until we've looked at the risk. We've looked at what we're leveraging against that risk to see where we have some room for improvement to be able to do better in the future, whether that's through human resources, material resources, changing our processes, and et cetera. So, we'll start with the Community Risk Assessment because once again, you've already been introduced to the strategic plan and the performance indicators cut across a swath of aspects of the department that we're not going to drill down on too deeply tonight in this presentation. But the Community Risk Assessment, if you look at it, it's essentially painting a picture of our jurisdiction and the vulnerabilities to our citizens, our buildings, our environment, and even our economic vitality as a community. And being able to understand that and what you do need to leverage against that to be able to solve problems for our public. So, the Community Risk Assessment involves looking at our geography and taking our whole jurisdiction and be able to carve it up into areas, be able to understand characteristics, to be able to plan effectively for the resources that we're going to send out to solve problems in those areas. It involves a risk classification. So, taking what we know can happen out there and breaking it down into smaller understandable pieces to be able to understand the risk itself, the different levels of severity of a risk and to be able to define that so it's clearly communicated to U.S. elected officials, to the public, they could be out there being harmed by those risks, and our own firefighters, so we can understand the game that we're playing. The Critical Task Analysis is another really important aspect of the Community Risk Assessment. That's where you take those risks and you break them down into their components and look at them to kind of see like really the nuts and bolts of it. This is the problem. What do you need to put hands on and how many hands do you need to go out there and solve that problem? And we'll speak a little bit more on that here in just a moment. Risk scoring. So, taking those risks and applying a methodology that we can use across very different types of risk to be able to provide a consistent methodology, be able to score that risk to be able to understand it and once again, to be able to communicate that to you and to be able to confront it. And lastly, here is the disaster potential. Those things that don't happen that often, when they do, they cut across many of the different types of risks that they face. All of you on the dais lived through the ice storm. Many of you obviously have memories of the 2000 tornado, these type of things. What comes out of those when it comes down to the impact utilities and structural components and fires may start in some of those cases, people are using electricity different. Those things cut across very differently, but we recognize those disaster potentials and we understand that some of that has to do with geography, so it has to do with weather, topography and circumstances and historical trends. So, we're going to be looking at that with our Community Risk Assessment as well. And don't be scared that I'm going to be here all night because I'm not going super in-depth on all of these things, but you will have a chance to get a closer look at that after this. Okay, so our geographic planning zones. If you look up here at this map, everybody should recognize this. This is the community that we live in, that you're serving, right? So, you should all remember from the times that we've talked before that we have five stations and we have five general run areas. Station one is there on Ninth Street, right in the middle of town. Station two is out to the east, station three is out to the west, four is in the southeast and five is in the southwest. So, we took each one of our station run areas and we subdivided those to compartmentalize them for the sake of gathering data and being able to understand the characteristics of these zones. So, whenever you see 1.2 and 1.2 in the center of the map, that's station one's run area and it's divided by, all of these are divided by thoroughfares that you're all very familiar with. So, station one, for instance, you just cut it in half by Frederica Street, the main street that runs through it. Some of the outer perimeter ones, it's the bypass. You have the outside of the bypass, you have the inside and you all know that the difference in a lot of areas is that you might have more commercial on the outside of the bypass. So, that's a very different planning zone than what you're going to deal with with primarily residential on the inside of the bypass in some of these planning zones. So, that's how we divided up the planning zones and we have a profile for each one of these zones, what happens there, what the demographics are, how many building permits are coming in there, what those building permits are for, what happens, whether people are doing business, living there, if it's mostly apartments versus single family, and those other characteristics that we need to know to be able to plan to do our jobs effectively in fire service. So, the risk classification, it should be, it's more intuitive for us maybe than it is for someone from the outside. But whenever you look at what the fire department does as an all-hazards agency, we are a fire department, that's our brand. But I'm sure as you've paid attention whenever I do the annual reports and you look at some of the stats that I'm sure have been shared with you over time by the city manager and by myself, then you've seen that fire runs are actually a low percentage overall of the runs that we go on. A much higher percentage would be in the realm of EMS, Emergency Medical Services, and then technical rescue, hazardous materials, and then for the sake of the Community Risk Assessment, we've catalogued river emergencies separately because of the difference in what it takes for the deployment to be able to access emergencies that take place on the river and adjacent to the river to be able to reach those things by watercraft. So, those are essentially the buckets that we dropped our call types into to be able to classify our risks for the community. Next, the Critical Task Analysis, as you see on the slide, it's a process of breaking down our incident types into task-level components. And we do that to kind of take a look at our own agency to say, okay, with our resources, what do we need to leverage against this problem, whether it's the people, the number of trucks, a specific type of equipment, and then to make deployment determinations based on that. Going through a process like this, which we used a team-based approach to do it, cutting across all ranks from firefighters on up to myself as the facilitator of the process, we got down to the nitty-gritty. We got in a room, we looked at it from the simplest call in each one of those areas we discussed before, fire, EMS and on, to the other ones. We just looked at them like what, how many people do we need to solve this problem if it's a simple problem? And then we worked our way through to the more complex problems. Whenever you get to a point where you say, okay, if we're being honest with ourselves, this is what it takes to solve that problem and if we look back, say historically, that is not what we've done, then that's something that we understand that we need to address and that's the kind of thing that we want to derive from this process to move forward. Okay, so, an example of the critical tasking, and once again, not to go in-depth about it, but whenever you see a chart like this, this was developed out of those meetings with our staff where we just broke it down. You have the classification of fire and you're looking at a low risk. If you look at the column, the low-risk column there in the middle of the page, it's essentially saying that that's the number of people you need to perform each one of these functions to effectively mitigate that incident. So, a low-risk fire, for instance, may be a car fire. If you look at those tasks, you need someone to be in charge. That person's going to be looking out for the other folks on scene, they're going to be handling radio communications and directing resources toward the problem and asking for other resources if the scope of the problem increases. Pump operations. If we're going to be throwing water off the truck, someone actually has to be at the truck to be able to control the pressures and be able to affect that. So, we're getting the water and if you have a drawdown of water to be able to move forward to access another water source such as a hydrant and then the attack line, you want someone moving the hose towards the problem. You want someone on the nozzle to be able to control that. So, this does, it really does get down into detail for us and each one of these tasks within the Risk Assessment and Standards of Cover document are defined so that you could pretty much build your fire department from scratch and give them the, give them a description of what they need to do to be able to mitigate these problems. So, once again, not super detailed, but just kind of give you a glance at what we're looking at. On the low risk, you see that four on the bottom. You say it takes four people to solve the problem on that level. It goes up and up and up. If you look at the far right on the bottom, or I'm sorry, yes, on the bottom, you see 31 people. If you know that our minimum staffing is 27, then you know that if you get to the maximum risk, which for us would be a high-rise or a commercial structure over 13,000 square foot, then you understand that what we have on duty may not be enough and that's where we draw on mutual aid agreements and resources that we have. Maybe we don't have 31 people on duty at that time, but that's why we have agreements with partners for them to be able to augment our resources to be able to effect a response to that problem. I want to contrast this with the next slide. So, you can see how fire ramps up pretty quickly from four up to 31 people in what we refer to as an effective response force, which is by definition the complement of personnel that is necessary to mitigate the incident that we're discussing. Contrast that with this slide here on EMS. Most EMS calls fall into that first, that low-risk column there. So, you can see you need somebody who's going to be right there doing the primary care for that patient. Usually, they need one or two people to help grab things out of the bag and help them get vitals and those things. And you need someone else, once again, to be able to control that scene, handle radio communications and be able to ask for the resources if you need them and to handle documentation. So, the reason that this ramps up and you might need more people is because there are other types of calls that involve more patients or have other aspects to them, maybe even technical aspects. There was a call today involving a semi against a vehicle. Well, that's not a simple, that's not a low-risk incident. Motor vehicle accidents, that moves up in severity. It's more risk. You need more people to be able to mitigate that incident properly. And then the high risk, we send even more people on that. That could be where you're gearing more towards a mass casualty incident and if we're sending 11 people to that, then the ambulance service had better be sending a lot more than that because that means you're turning those ambulances around and transporting a lot of patients. Okay. So, that's our critical tasking at a glance. So, our risk scoring. You use the risk scores. It's, and once again, I have a mistake on this. Risk scores to determine, you've already determined the classifications by saying we go to fires, we go to EMS, we go to ASMAT. Now, the risk scores within each one of those help you determine what your categories are within those on your severity. So, the incidents with the least are always going to be considered your low risk and that's why in the slides that you saw previous to this, it showed that you had four people on those runs. We sent four on an engine. So, if we send an engine, you're getting four people. That's generally the least that you're going to get to come solve the problem. So, it's from that to adding other units onto it to scale up and go well beyond those first four people that show up as a complement. So, you're categorizing each one of these risks from low to moderate to high and in some cases even maximum whenever certain types of, certain classifications actually go well beyond that. Okay, so, to be able to do that, you have to apply the same scoring methodology across each one of those classifications. And the slide that's in front of you pretty much lays out how we're doing that. Whether it is an EMS or a technical rescue or a run on the river, we're looking at those, each one of those call types to say, how often does this happen here? And we use our data to determine that. We're looking at the consequence of it. How many people are affected by this? Or what is the economic or environmental impact of it? And on the impact, how many people are we sending out there? Because if you think about it, if we send folks from two station houses and they're tied up for a while in a community where we have five fire stations, you effectively only have three operating stations available for the next emergency that comes in that case, if you understand that. So, anyway, this is the scale that we applied and we'll apply this scale to every call type, every emergency call type that we have within our agency that we run on. And this is just an example of how we do this. So, low-risk fire, I mentioned the vehicle fires. It could be a trash fire, dumpster. It's the one that's going to take the least number of personnel, whether it's low-risk fire, moderate risk, or it's low-risk ASMAT, high-risk ASMAT, across all of these categories in the risk assessment. Whenever you, whenever you take the time to look at this once it's provided to you, you will be able to look at this simple graphic and see how we have formulated these risk scores and applied them to this model so that at a glance, you can look at the shaded area in that triangle and you can tell by the size of that triangle how much of a risk that is in our community and when it is a risk, what is the nature of that risk. For example, low-risk fires, it doesn't angle towards impact that much because we don't send that many units on it. It doesn't go out to consequence that far because the low-risk fires, they are low-risk. They don't usually cause a lot of damage. We're usually able to stop those. They don't involve structures. But if you look at the probability, they actually happen more often than some of the fires that whenever you scale up in severity, you're actually going to see. So, let's contrast the low-risk fires with the moderate-risk fire incidents. If I flip back and then flip forward, you see a big difference. The impact, that triangle is skewed down towards impact. The impact, that triangle is skewed down towards impact, it's because we're sending so many more of our units on that run. And the moderate-risk fires, those are your single-family dwellings, your bread and butter house fires that you typically go on residential. So, going through these, once again, I have these in, in the risk assessment for all of these different categories of calls that you're gonna be able to take time to look at yourself. So, going through high, high-fire incidents, even more impact, it's getting down into more consequence, because some people are put out of their jobs, something bigger's gonna have to be rebuilt. You get down to maximum risk, maximum impact, maximum consequence, but very low probability. If these happened a lot, then we would have to rethink our, how we staff our fire department and what kind of resources we're deploying for emergency services here in Owensboro. Okay, so, to move on from that, I mentioned the disaster potential here, the natural and intentional disasters. Once again, we have experiences with these things, I'm not gonna, like, do this to death, but you can look at it and see, we're talking about floods, which most of the cities not in the floodplain that we have to be so concerned about, tornadoes can go anywhere. We've gone other places to help other people since we've had tornadoes here that we had to worry about, but we understand that that's a risk that can happen here because it has before and it will again, hopefully not in the heavily populated parts of town. Severe winter weather, some of you probably remember some of the circumstances that you're seeing on the screen there because those were taken locally. Earthquakes, we all grew up understanding that someday it was gonna come, terrorism is just a reality in the world today unfortunately, and then mass casualty events, we are worried about the things that bad actors can do, or even whenever you think about some of the high-profile public events that we do and some of the risks, the reason we do so much safety planning and involve so many partners in that planning is because there are so many things that can happen and the potential risk is there, and it's up to us to counter some of that risk. Okay, so that's the risk assessment side. Once again, we mirror that with the standards of cover. So, we've described our methodology for looking at the risks that are in the community, which we derive a lot from our historical data that we have from our own records, and now we'll take the standards of cover to be able to look at how are we leveraging resources against that, determining what, what are the standards that we need to be applying to our responses, and how are we doing on meeting those metrics? So, the standards of cover development involves benchmarking, finding your baselines, and then performing a gap analysis between those things to, to have really strong performance analytics to be able to understand where you are by measuring yourself against, against standards that you can derive from sources such as the NFPA, and even looking at other like-sized departments and how they deploy, but, but, and then looking at that against the context of the resources that you have in your own department and what you can do, and what you're up against, and what your trends are. So, benchmarking, we go right to NFPA seventeen-ten, it's very common, I'm sure Chief Hunt recognizes that. So, seventeen-ten lays out a response time continuum, which we don't have to adhere too strictly, but it's a really great guide to be able to understand the standards for what should be expected for a response, an adequate response in the areas that you see on the screen there. And there's a graphic here that comes right out of seventeen-ten that you can see to understand this. So, you're always starting from a state of normalcy before the emergency has happened, if you follow along from top to bottom. Someone has to find that the event has occurred, and then they're gonna contact our public safety answering point by calling nine-one-one. There's the amount of time that it takes the nine-one-one center to send that call over to us, so you have your alarm processing time, you get into the middle of that, the turnout time is our behavioral side, where we have to actually get geared up after we learn about the call and leave the station to get to the problem, and then the amount of time it takes to get from where we are to where we need to be is our travel time. And then, all of these, the times for all of these things are being kept in the CAD system, and all of this data is being transferred over to our records management system for us to be able to do our data, data analysis. So, that's the response time continuum that performs the basis for our benchmarking. So, take all that and take our data, and then apply the methodology that we've learned from the accreditation process, and we're working off of ninetieth percentile times to try to learn where we are against our benchmarks, and you get something that looks like this. And we're not going through all of these that are in the risk assessment standards of cover, but if you look at this, this is the moderate-risk fire, which once again, most people's context for what the fire department, department does is to go out and fight fires in residential buildings, single-family residences. So, this gives you kind of a taste of what that data looks like, and I base the data on fiscal years, if you look in the column that is headed by twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-five, those are those fiscal years, the, I believe the benchmark for call processing time is sixty-four seconds ninety percent of the time, and over that three-year experience, Paul Nave and his dispatchers were able to achieve a fifty-nine second baseline for that. So, that's great, so then what do you do with that? And we're gonna look at the benchmarks here on the next, or the, our, our gap analysis, I think on the next slide, but if, if you're, if your benchmark is sixty-four seconds and you're doing it fifty-nine seconds, well, guess what, next time we do it, our benchmark's actually gonna be less than fifty-nine seconds, because we always want to be leaning forward and doing better. So, taking that, this is a graphic that shows how our gap analysis came out for our department, and this is kind of busy if you don't have a lot of context for looking at it, but let me just say, this presents the benchmarks that we have, and once again, for, for this one, they primarily came out of NFPA seventeen-ten, so sixty-four seconds ninety percent of the time for our call handling, a minute and twenty seconds ninety percent of the time for our folks, after they get the alarm, to be on the truck and the wheels start to roll. Four minutes to be able to get from where they are to where they need to be, travel time. And then the ERF travel, that's gonna be the amount of time that it takes to constitute the whole complement that is necessary to mitigate that incident. You have your first unit total response, which goes from the time that we're notified until arrival on scene, and then the effective response force total response may not be, that's not the first unit that gets there, that's when the whole complement that is necessary gets there. These are all extremely important for us to measure because we're not able to perform our service until we have the assets available where the problem is actually occurring. And I'm contrasting that with EMS, so you see the fire one, and then you see EMS, basically the ones where you see the greens, that's where we're surpassing the, our baselines are better than our benchmark, the yellows, we're within a minute of the benchmark that we're trying to achieve, and the reds are over a minute. So, those are our, those red marks, those are our red flags, that's what we need to work on the most. So, I'm almost done. The improvement plan, like, what do we learn from this whole process? Well, the main thing we want to learn is what can we do better, because we want to be better. We talked about going from good to great. We do have a good, a good fire department, we want people to understand that whether, whether we're great today or not is not of as much consequence as far as we're striving to be there, and this is how we do that. So, we identify things that we can actually do to get to that point. One of those is working towards achieving the, the adopted performance benchmarks that are outlined in the, in the risk assessment standards of cover document. One is already in the early stages of being implemented, the automated vehicle location, where dispatch goes from having a map where they have ESNs and they determine where, which unit goes based on where it is geographically. The difference with automated vehicle location is you send the closest unit, so that's gonna help those, those travel times and those response times. Keeping units in their assigned run areas during peak call times, we know the afternoon's busiest, I have the data that shows which hours are busiest and on which days, maybe those aren't the best times for units to be out of station going to the training center or, or doing other things. Evaluating our watercraft deployment, because news flash, it takes a while to hook up a boat at Station One and get it down in the river to be able to be ready to do the things it needs to do, if we don't know about an emergency beforehand, which we usually don't. The, determining the best location to rebuild Station Four, Operation Firehouse, we're all proud of that, it's, we're deep into that, it's going great, we haven't made a final determination on the location of Station Four, whether it will be in the same location it is now, or if a property acquisition or repurposing of another property may be necessary, this is a chance to look at that to see if it can help improve some of our metrics for the southeast corridor in town, out two-thirty-one in the developing area out Old Hartford that's been annexed. Aligning our training plan with our critical task analysis. So, when our teams got together and we did this critical task analysis, we found that there were places where when we talked about what we need to be doing was slightly different than what has always been done, and that's of high value to us because we need to be willing to change. So, whenever you're gonna make those changes, it's critical that you seed that in your training plan. The, and lastly, on this slide is revising our community risk reduction plan to focus on measurable outcomes, because that can be really powerful, because you know that in my heart, I'm more of a prevention guy than a response guy, because what you prevent, you don't have to respond to. So, so that's a very critical piece of this, is not just trying to get to these things fast, but trying to make sure they don't happen in the first place. I want to thank you for your time, I'll take any questions that you have, and for anyone watching at home or in the audience, this is how you can get ahold of me, or you can find me at five-twelve West Ninth Street.
Thanks, Chief, tremendous amount of invitation to try to absorb.
There's a lot more than that.
Any questions from the dice?
So, Chief, in each of the stations, what's the worst, what do you consider to be the most challenging scenario, and I'll throw one out so you have a context, so, for Station, the station that handles Roosevelt House, I imagine that's one you're very conscious of, because I see multiple units, anytime we get a call at Roosevelt House, you'll see multiple units go there because it's a high-rise. So, would, what would be the, the most difficult fire to fight in the others, the other four areas? Like Station Two out on fifty-four, as an example.
Yeah, well, first of all, when you're talking about the Roosevelt House, or you're talking about some of these bigger structures, that's not a problem just for that station, they're just the first guys that get there. The Roosevelt House, they're going up those eighteen flights of stairs, and it's not like you run up eighteen flight stairs, they have a lot on their back and on their body that they're taking up there, they're just the tip of the spear. We're looking at the drawdown of the whole, whole agency and what that's doing to us whenever we have to do that, and whether we have to pull in help to finish that. But if you go to be specific about Station Two, and you have that east corridor with the rapid development that's occurred out there, the, the risk with fire still predominant in that area is single-family homes that are aging. If you think about Glendale, Wing Avenue, that area, you're more likely to have a fire there, we don't do, we don't do inspections in, in homes, like, we don't have, we can't just walk in people's home and do inspections, right? But if we go out to, out to Ragus or out to Gateway Commons, we walk through there, we have codes that they're adhering to. The Gateway Commons and a lot of that area that's out east of the bypass, we really don't have a lot of call volume there, and they're, and it's a lot of new construction. We have some alarms that come in, you have alarms at the hospital, you don't have a lot of real, real structure fires that happen, but I'll say, the thing that we would worry about the most is something critical such as the hospital having a significant incident that would overwhelm our resources, and we would absolutely require the county's assistance in the near term while we were pulling off-duty units, and that's part of the reason that the county actually has automatic aid to the hospital. When we go to an alarm in the hospital, the county's already sending a truck with us, so that we have a head start on the problem if it turns out to be an actual confirmed fire. That run area is very interesting because you have a, an industrial corridor over there with Ragus or Miss Can, you have RWR out there, a burgeoning issue that we're, that we confront is the advent of the assisted living and nursing homes, whether you're talking about Cedarhurst or out on Calumet, those are realities, and that's why we're dividing into those geographic planning zones, so that the officers and the, and the firefighters under them in those areas can know their areas better and understand what those risks are and understand what they're confronting. Because if you ask the guys at Station Five, the ones who run to the Roosevelt House, they're much more likely to have to go down Sherm Road and go to a part of the town where the community is aging, to be able to go to a medical call out there to try to help someone who needs their help, whether that's applying oxygen, taking vitals, or helping to load them, to go to the hospital for a stroke or one of those things, they're much more likely to do that, and that dictates the rise in their call volume much more than what's happening in terms of fire. But there is no doubt, a tremendous amount of resources will be necessary in either one of the Roosevelt Houses.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am.
So, all this medical stuff, do they have to have EMT certification before they get hired?
With the Owensboro Fire Department? No, no, we, you're not required to have EMT, you are if you come in as a lateral transfer. So, if you come in as a, from another department to come on our department and kind of circumvent the entry-level hiring process that we usually do, build a list and hire off of every year, then you, then you have to have EMT and some other things. Our entry-level process, such as the five recruits that, that we were really honored to have you come out and swear in on Saturday, Saturday morning, when they came in, I think one is an EMT, but they were not required to have EMT at that point, they are required to achieve that certification by the time they complete their eighteen-month probational period.
Just some are, just not all of them, right?
None of the entry-level are required to have it, they are, when they come in, they are, they are all required to have it to, to leave probation, to be able to get a regular appointment that you guys will vote on.
Okay, just trying to get that straight in my head. Somebody knocked the power off these computers up here. Okay, any other questions?
I, I want to close by saying, saying thank you, this is a robust document, the current form of it's about a hundred and eighty pages, I've learned some things from the peer group that is in town doing our assessment this week, that, that gives me a reason to think that there are some other parts that we can build in, if you're lucky, it'll get up to two-hundred pages, we will be making this available soon to you, it'll be available to the public, searchable PDF that is very user-friendly, that I hope that you do take the time to look at, because this is your community and you will recognize a lot in this, but I think it'll be good for you in your role as elected officials, making decisions that impact our department and this community. Lastly, I mentioned those two-hundred-and-fifty performance indicators, one of the things that is important for jurisdictions to do is to adopt the risk assessment and standards of cover for you guys to adopt that as the AHJ. So, I'm presenting this here today to familiarize you with that, and I just want you to know that we will be back with a finalized document and asking you to adopt the, to adopt the data, the recommendations, any improvement plan in that document. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have a monitor issue that...
So long, I knocked my monitor off, yeah.
Okay, we'll skip back up to four A, we'd like to unveil the Owensboro twenty-twenty-five Christmas card, we have the master of design, Aaron Kaiser here today, and I don't know, we don't, we're gonna put it up on the screen, because I approved it way too late for you to get a nice photo here for it. Y'all wanna pass my phone around, you can see it. That's my favorite one ever. Yeah, come on up here. That's good. You have to state your name and address for the record.
Aaron Kaiser, two-fifteen East Ninth Street. So, this year's, what I was trying to do was create a holiday version of the illuminate mural that was done on the side of the building, I don't know what that building is called, but, the Riverwalk side of it. So, actually, when I was down there painting the mural for the illuminate, I was trying to consider how I would do it if it was for a seasonal thing, the Johnny Depp mural, every year I keep telling myself I'm gonna go down there for Christmas and paint a Santa hat on it, and never get around to it, so, that was the whole concept for this year, was to create the holiday version of that.
Well, we're in the process of...
Yeah, it could be horrible. It could be horrible, nobody's seen it.
I don't think it's horrible, I really like it, I'll tell you. Is that awesome or what?
So, unfortunately, this one doesn't work under the UV lights like the mural downtown does.
I think it's fantastic, it might, it's my favorite one.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you, and I appreciate you allowing me to do this, I had a lot of fun with this one.
Yeah, aggravating the snot out of you, didn't I, trying to get you... Yeah, aggravating the snot out of you, didn't I, trying to get you to do this and do that, didn't I? I try to leave him alone, because his creativity is beyond my comprehension, so, but I really am pleased with that. I thank you very much.
No, no, well, thank you. Y'all have a great night.
Okay. I'm afraid to touch anything, I'm almost... I'll just sit there and leave that on my monitor there. Okay. Got the Christmas card done. Four C, City Project List, City Manager Nate Pagan.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you. I know you've had the project list update. I emailed that yesterday. It's in your packet for your review. I think you have hard copies with you as well. So I'll just say that I think that actually this week, the framing started going up on the senior center, so it's good to see that progressing well. Pickleball is moving pretty quickly as well. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
The indoor sports facility?
Yep. This continues to go well. I think the framing is largely done, structural work, and so they're working on some of the, what? Oh, starting interior walls, and still on schedule for a late June, early July of twenty-six opening.
And back to the Christmas card. I forgot to say that they're, can be purchased at City Hall one oh one East Fourth Street for two dollars each starting next week. So watch the Facebook page from the City of Owensboro, and there's just a limited number of cards available. Thanks for letting me. I know the city clerk don't like me doing that, but... All right, item five A. Consider approval of minutes from dated November the fourth, twenty-twenty-five. I'll make a motion to approve these minutes. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Consider these board appointments, please. Owensboro Parks and Recreation Advisory Board reappoint Paula Hayden to a two-year term effective November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, and Human Relations Commission reappoint Dava Kelly to a three-year term effective December the fourth, twenty-twenty-five. I make a motion to approve these board appointments. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion, additions or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item six, this will be second reading of an ordinance, and it will be a roll call vote. Ms. David.
Ordinance nineteen dash twenty-twenty-five, an ordinance establishing procedures governing suspensions or revocations of the privilege to ride Owensboro Transit System buses. Read for approval on second reading this eighteenth day of November, twenty-twenty-five.
I make a motion to approve. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
City Manager, please inform us about this, please.
Mayor, just in summary, we did discuss this last week. This is second reading of an ordinance, creating a process for suspending unruly riders from the transit system. While it doesn't happen often, luckily, we do need an improved method for suspending riding privileges that provides due process to a suspended rider, so the department can do a short-term suspension. It comes as a recommendation to the city manager, who would issue a long-term suspension, and it does provide a due process provision while that suspended rider can appeal to you guys as the Board of Commissioners, who would act as a jury to hear whether that suspension would be upheld or not. It's based on, or modeled after, a process that we've used in the Parks Department for several years, and it's worked very well.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanford?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Maglinger?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Glenn?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item seven, municipal order, please.
Municipal Order twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-five, a municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an application for body armor grant, funding through the Office of the Kentucky Attorney General Department of Criminal Investigations, in the amount of two-hundred-fifty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-two dollars and nine cents, the proceeds of which will be utilized by the City of Owensboro Police Department to purchase body armor, no match required from the city. Read for approval on one reading this eighteenth day of November, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve this municipal order. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
City Manager, please.
The city clerk's summary was, was good. Again, this municipal order for a grant specifically for body armor, requesting ninety-five helmets and eleven shields, for a total of two-hundred-fifty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-two dollars, no match is required from the city.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by, is this a roll call? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven B.
Municipal Order twenty-seven dash twenty-twenty-five, a municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an application for the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Initiative Grant administered by the Bureau of Justice Assistance, designed to provide critical resources to law enforcement jurisdictions for the purpose of reimbursing the Owensboro Police Department for fifty percent of the total cost of twenty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-forty-six dollars expended to purchase thirty-five new bulletproof vests, that amount being fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. Read for approval on one reading this eighteenth day of November, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve this municipal order. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
City Manager?
Her summary was excellent, so I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item eight.
Just, yes, sir, just two personnel appointments tonight. Promotional probationary status of Ted Johnson, probationary full-time, non-civil service, promotional appointment to captain with the Fire Department effective November thirtieth. Tyler Grant, probationary full-time, non-civil service, promotional appointment to lieutenant with the Fire Department effective December twenty-eighth.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve these probationary status appointments. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eight B.
Just a couple of comments. First, of course, next week is Thanksgiving, so City Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday of next week in observance of...
Are you cooking?
That holiday. I'm not cooking, Mayor. That would not be a good, a good thing. No one would want to eat it. We'd be going out for spaghetti or something probably if I were cooking. So I hope everyone can spend time with their family. And just a couple of related events as we approach the holiday season, there's kickoff really, the, the tree lighting ceremony is Friday at five PM. Does look like there may be some inclement weather, so stay tuned. We may have to adjust that, but it's right now scheduled for five PM on Friday, and then the Christmas parade is Saturday at four-thirty.
So where is that tree lighting? What place?
It is downtown in Smothers Park.
Smothers Park, not McConnell Plaza.
Smothers Park.
Smothers Park. Oh, yeah, over there by the...
Right, between the fountain and the restrooms.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. I saw them put that thing together. That's really something. Communication from elected officials. Commissioner Sanford?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. I want to thank everybody who helped put on the Veterans Day Parade. Job well done. I know it takes a lot of work and effort to get all that organized. I want to thank them for that. And you mentioned the Christmas parade and the tree lighting, and just, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and spend a lot of time with your family and friends, because that's what it's for. We're very blessed in our community and our state and country. So enjoy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, it's my favorite holiday of the year by far. And I, too, and we had a better turnout for the Veterans Day Parade than we've had in a long time, so that's very important, because we would not be doing what we're doing without those heroic efforts, so... Commissioner Maglinger?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to congratulate the five graduates for our Owensboro Fire Department. That was an amazing event Saturday, so thank you, and excited to see them. And then wanted to also remind people that November twenty-ninth, they're having the world premiere of Bachelor Santa at River Park Center, so that's putting Owensboro on the, all over, so that's great. And then I just wanted to also thank everybody and wish them a happy Thanksgiving.
I think I got a little cameo in that, too. They're not paying anything, but I think I got...
Come to see it, yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Want to thank Adrian and Beth and all of us, and Shaylee, for a great preparation and execution of the Neighborhood Alliance Dinner. Thought that was a lovely event. It's always good to be able to bring everybody in the community who's working so hard in various areas to upgrade our community. So thanks again to our staff for the great work they did. I thought it was a nice evening. Amanda's here, so I get to thank her. Went out and golfing, and you've got new signs up. They look great. At least, I'm sure you have it on the eighteen hole, too, but I'm not good enough for that, so... But the nine hole, it looked, they look really good, so congrats on that. And then I want to echo what Jeff and Curtis have said about the other events. The OFD graduation was a very nice event. Want to thank OFD for letting us use their boat for the Veterans Parade. That was great. And so, looking forward to the Christmas break. And that's it. Happy Thanksgiving.
Okey-dokey. All right, now we'll go to item ten, open public forum. Members of the audience may address the Board of Commissioners on any matter of public concern that was not on the agenda. Comments are limited to issues within the scope and responsibility of the commission. Commission meetings are held to conduct city business for the benefit of Owensboro citizens and taxpayers. At this time, anyone who wishes to address the city commission must, can make their way to the podium. To be recognized, speakers must state their name and address for the clerk's record and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. So open mic. Well, okey-dokey, we got a bite.
Apologize, I'm not a public speaker or anything like that. My name's Georgia Bryant. I live at thirty-four thirty-four Professional Park Drive. And what I've come to make you guys aware of is the situation as far as, like, carts on the transit system.
Explain that a little bit, please.
So there are some of us, well, I ride the bus pretty much daily. It's how I get to work, it's how I get to doctor's appointments, it's how I get to the grocery store. Lift isn't really an option. You have to have a bank account, not everyone does, and it can be cost prohibitive. And so we have carts to put our groceries in. The past, I'd say, month and a half, maybe two months, they have told us that we have to fold our carts up on the bus and be able to set all our groceries in our lap. And so they're refusing people to get on the bus. It's been suggested that, you know, you make several trips to go to the grocery store. Well, it takes three hours for me to get to the grocery store and get home. And I can't, like I said, I can't always afford a lift. There was an instance where, where there was a seventy-eight-year-old woman. She went to Walmart on Fredericka Street, and she had her little cart, which I understand, you know, we can't block the aisles or anything like that. I put mine in between my legs, and it does not stick out farther than my feet. She purchased all her items for her Thanksgiving dinner. The bus pulled up. She went to board. You know, she was told she would have to remove the items, put them in her lap, and fold her cart up. And she informed the driver that she couldn't hold her turkey and everything in her lap, so they left her there. And this was the bus that left the station at six oh five, so it was dark, and she was stuck out there at Walmart, seventy-eight years old. I'm not even sure how she got home. And so people can't go to the laundromat, and we're just kind of stuck. It's like, we don't know what to do in this situation, because they're not allowing us access with our carts anymore. And the rules actually say that I got from the bus station. Small carts are permitted but cannot be in aisles or in pathways of doors, cannot take up a location intended for mobility devices or wheelchairs. It only says strollers have to be folded. And this is just something I don't know if you guys can address, or... But it's really an issue that we've got.
Counselor?
I can speak to Vicki Pennington with OTS about that. And I, I know that they have rules and regulations governing carts, but I can address that with her.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll say, we were made aware of this a couple of days ago. So Stephen Franklin and I discussed it actually today, so we're looking into it. Of course, the transit is, is a division of Public Works under Stephen's purview, so we're looking into it. Hopefully, we'll have more information soon. We discussed it in fifteen minutes before they're being started, just briefly.